Okay, we're gonna go ahead and just start it with our work session. Mr. Holmes.
Thank you, Madam President. I have one item on the agenda today. It's item C under the consent agenda. It is consideration and approval of a resolution and mutual aid agreement to participate in the Alabama interlocal mutual aid compact. And this is as a result of some legislation that was passed this year that allows for emergency management agencies across the state to participate. And it really streamlines, for our purposes, the reimbursement side of things previously in order to be used for any type of natural disaster. There was a process to get through the states that had to go to FEMA. FEMA had to come back to the state and so on and so forth. By enacting this act and passing this resolution, you'll allow us to be able to gather resources or garner resources into Lauderdale County without some of that bureaucratic red tape. And likewise, it extends some of the liability protections for any of our first responders that are operating outside of the area when they are called upon by another emergency management agency. An example of this would be Florence Fire Swift Water Rescue being called to another county to assist by their emergency management. While there are already some protections in place, this extends those protections and gives them the additional authority outside of Lauderdale County to operate and to affect the safe rescue.
Any questions for her?
Brad, you talked about this a little bit at our most recent 911 board meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
And so that was some additional extra explanation. I appreciate that you were giving a little bit more.
Yes, ma'am.
When you talk about the water rescue, is that the most recent we've experienced with this, or has there been another example that might resonate with people?
So, the most recent, yes, has been the Swift Water Rescue Team assisting outside of the city of Florence, both within Lauderdale County and outside of Lauderdale County. Another example during the outbreak of tornadoes we had during the spring, there were several instances where our office was called upon to assist our neighbors in Calvert County in identifying, locating, and providing for some protections for folks along River Road that were impacted by that. Those are just two examples. In addition, it's Florence Police Department's dive and rescue team is called upon often in Limestone County to assist with operations on Elk River and along the Tennessee River. And so this would allow for those MOUs to be in place ahead of time, just for the first responders' protection and also for ease of repayment.
Thank you. That's very helpful. I think it just helps people understand the connection and how the mutual aid benefits us and others ultimately for the benefit of the individual.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Madam President.
I have one item on the consent agenda, item D, which is a request to approve payment for emergency repair to Hobart Sales and Service for labor and materials needed to fix the icebreaker located at Urban Forestry Department Office in the amount of $603.74 as shown on invoice FA 70792 dated June 13th of '25.
Okay, you know everything going, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And so it's been fixed?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's for you.
Good afternoon. I have item E on the consent agenda. This is our renewal of our contract with Online Utility Exchange. This is where we verify a customer's social security number. If they don't have their card, this keeps them from having to wait to come back. And really good service. We do probably 60 to 70 of these a month.
Any questions?
Did that cost go up?
It did go up a little. It used to be like a dollar and 97, I think, per. It's $2.14 now.
And is the 60 to 70 a month typical, like, average, or have you seen an increase in that?
It has increased. We used to, probably in the past, when we first started into the past few years, I would say maybe we would do 40 to 50, so that is increasing, yes.
Except this additional amount is covered by your budget, or are you having to pull from somewhere else?
No, this is covered in our regular expenses on our budget.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
No additional questions? All right, thank you very much.
Good afternoon. We have one item on the agenda, item F. This is a quote from Industrial Inspection and Analysis, IIA lifting services, for $8,031.60 to do our yearly service testing on all of our ladders, our aerial apparatus ladders and our ground ladders. This is a expense from account number 25642200. They'll be coming on site and doing this work, doing this testing for us. Any questions?
Chief, one of the things, when I was looking at it, I wanted to make sure I understood it. I might be misreading it, so please forgive me if this is a dumb question. So, the $8,031 is the total for five or not per?
That was the total for five ladder trucks and over 900 feet of ground ladders.
Okay, that's what I was like. Am I reading that correctly? I want to make sure. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Justin?
How are y'all?
Good, honey.
I'm good. I've got item G and item H, and both of those are to approve a invoice to be paid to Bagby Elevator 1 in the amount of $620. That is where the call button was not working, so the elevator wouldn't go to the basement for 911 EMA, so we had to have that fixed. Also, the other one is every five years, the state requires us to do a full load test on the elevators, and that's the one in the amount of $2,749. So they come in, put weights on the elevator, and make sure that it will handle a full load. So that's required for our certification for elevators.
Do you want to pick all the all black colors?
Once they fix the first one, yes.
And do we split those costs with the county?
No, these are the city municipal elevators in our building.
Thank you. And then, do you mind hanging out? I got your email back, but I have some more questions for you.
Okay.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bailey.
I have two items, item 11I and 11J, and these are Florence First Economic Development Program agreements for our Florence First Small Business Assistance Program. One will be going to S&amp;R Food Group, which does business as the Lava Room, and then the second will go to Watts Enterprises LLC, who does business as More Space Place. This is a new business, so they'll be taking advantage of the new business opportunity in the Lava Room. We'll be assisting them with economic cost as well. Both are retaining or creating jobs.
Any questions for her?
Any questions about either of these?
How much longer do we expect this process to go on? We've been able to be very fortunate to have these grants available.
This is part of our normal offerings now. So it started as a COVID program. We used COVID relief funds that were available to us, and it was extremely popular, of course. And because it does fall under small business and economic development, which is an eligible activity under the Community Development Block Grant, then after we had, you know, a couple of years of testing out the program, utilizing the COVID funds that we were granted, we went ahead and decided to make it a permanent offering in community development. And so we work with Melissa Vivas, with New Business, and then we also work with the Small Business Development Center, which is housed at UNA.
Yeah, the More Space Place, they're over in District 4, and I'm so excited to see what they do to help people with organizations. Really cool. And then the Lava Room is just right over there.
Right, right.
Both locally owned.
Right, thank you. All right. And this is, to be very clear, this is for small locally owned businesses that are either located within a low mod area or employ a low to moderate income individual or individuals.
Melissa, I know we have another application that's in process that we've been waiting on. Is there an expiration date for when they start?
No, there's really not, because the way that the portal is established, once they create their account within the portal, the onus is theirs to complete all the uploads. And so until that is finished, we cannot finish our process, therefore, we would not put a deadline on them to complete that application. Now, what can happen, however, because this is a first come, first eligible, first served program, is, you know, we have inquiries on the daily for those that don't want to participate in the program. So it would not be unheard of for another business or two or five to begin the process in the same manner and finish that process and ultimately, you know, receive monies. It's not unlimited money. So, you know, it's possible that those that are, you know, either having issues gathering their paperwork or dragging their feet for whatever reason, you know, could be skipped over for lack of...
The money could run out?
Yes, and it will run out, yeah, for the year. And, you know, obviously, anytime there's a continuing resolution in Congress, then that also, you know, holds up any federal funding that flows down to both the states and municipalities. So there's definitely not unlimited funds annually, but we are able to help, you know, a lot of people.
Okay. Any other questions?
That's good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have several items on the agenda this evening. The first one is contract with TJ Construction. This is a recommendation to award TJ Construction with the high pressure valve, gas valve replacement Phase II. The amount is $547,264.30. This, of course, was bid out, and we accepted that TJ was the low bidder on the project. This is, of course, budgeted funds. Every year, we identify certain valves that are in need of replacement and classify them, and we go in that order in order to maintain appliance. And of course, this is Phase II, the next step to complete that.
Tad, will you go over that amount again, please?
Yes, ma'am. It's $547,264.30.
Where is that?
And is it emergent? Where is it, and is this an emergency?
This is gonna be, indeed, this is gonna be the industrial park area.
No, I meant where is it on the agenda?
It's to be added.
It's to be added to the agenda, yes.
Or maybe it's to be added.
Yes, it's, I'm sorry, it's gonna be 12A if I...
On the regular agenda.
Yes, on the regular agenda. Yes, I'm sorry. I thought you were asking about the location of the...
No.
Well, is it emergent?
Yes. This is something that we identify, so these valves are in need of replacement either due to leak, leakage, or a necessary need to repair due to age. It's all, it all has to do with the appliance with the Public Service Commission and, of course, ultimately, the Feds. And so we identify these, and we try, because of the expense, we only try to do a few per budget year. So we did a few last year, we did three last year for roughly about the same amount of money. It was right around a half a million dollars last year. And so we've identified, this is Phase II. This will be the next step that we do.
But it is currently leaking?
Yes.
Okay, which means that is the emergency nature of it?
Correct.
Because it did not go to the utility committee?
Yes, ma'am. It was in the budget that was passed. So we waited until the new budget year.
Okay, so it was part of your budgeted item?
Yes.
Because that was my next question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, sure, no problem. Yes. Yes, that's the reason we waited until after July 1st to start, when the new budget year took effect.
Budgeted item.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
So, can I give a motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion, Mr. O'Neal, for second by Mr. O'Neal, in favor.
Add, to add.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We're adding to the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
It was left off. Should we add it to the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
And then we'll go to the regular agenda.
12A, I believe, is about, as they go. No problem. Any more questions with that?
Did we get off the lines?
I didn't know that we should, I wish I had. I don't know that you leave. But you've got, like, one here. This has come up before.
Yes, ma'am. We tried to add it to the previous agenda, but, you know, the deadline is noon, the Tuesday before the agenda, and we opened those bids at 2:00 that day. So we tried to add it before, and so we, you know, because of the timeframe. And the reason it's of importance is because we need to get this done before cold weather sets in, because once cold weather sets in, the gas consumption goes up, and of course... And the reason we're doing this is so we're having to put bypass lines in place in order to do this, and we have, these are six inch lines and six inch valves that we're replacing, but we can put two inch bypass lines in place because the consumption is not as high right now. The demand for gas is not as high, so it's much cheaper to put a two inch bypass versus a six inch bypass. So that's really, that's really the urgency, I guess, behind it, is because of the upcoming cold weather that we have in a few months. And this is, you know, this is a pretty serious project. It's gonna take, you know, several weeks to complete it.
Of course. And my not voting for it, it's nothing to do with you, Tad, and the fact that I didn't have enough information to feel confident in that vote with the amount of money it is.
Sure, absolutely. Completely understand it.
Thank you.
Any more questions with that? Next, though, is a quote for Maintenance Plus. This is to replace an air conditioning unit in the engineering facility at Rickwood Road. It's a five ton gas tank unit. The cost is $8,500, and we kind of repaired that one until it's non-repairable, so we just need to replace.
Brand new unit?
Yes, it'll be a brand new unit, that's correct. Any questions on that one? All right, next is the DWSRF, which is the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. We have the opportunity to receive $477,600 from AAM in the form of a grant. This will be PFOS related, so this allows us to take this money and apply it to pay for our pilot studies that are gonna take place at Wilson Lake. Also, to, I think we can apply this to engineering costs. There's several different things that we can do and use this money for. So we need, you know, the appropriate signatures to get, make the application. We've already done all the legwork. We have all of the requested information from AAM. We just need to get the signatures in place in order to receive this money. This is also the money that we applied for about two years ago from, it's called the Emerging Contaminant Fund. You may hear it referred to as the EC fund, but they denied us because they said we were too large, basically. We were too large of a system. But evidently, the money is still available, so they reached back out to us and said, oh, you are eligible now, please apply. And so we've gone through all that. We just need the proper signatures in place to get this relevant.
Hundred percent? Or is there a match?
Yes, there's no match. This is, the $477,600 is 100%. And believe me, we already have it spent.
That's some what you've shared at the consent.
Yes, ma'am. So this will be, this will be very handy and come in handy to allow us to do things that we already kind of got in place. Any questions with that? Next is a contract with HACH. It's a quote for $4,397, and this is for the repair and calibration and technical support for all of our bench top spectrophotometers and turbidometers at both the water treatment facilities. Did I say repeat that? Yeah, sorry.
Want to start over?
Bench, bench, sorry. I forgot to add the N.
We was like, whoa, man.
Yeah, bench top. Sorry, I'm from Lexington, so y'all will have to give my southern brogue. Bench top spectrophotometers and turbidometers. Sorry, I was focusing on the word spectrophotometers. But this is an annual, this is an annual thing that we have to do every year for those devices that use, that we use to treat our water at both facilities. And then the last item that I have, if I'm correct, is a quote from Brink's Fence Company for $15,900. This is for the installation of a new chain link fence and gate at the Rash Road mix station. It's a desperate need of a repair. And then also, we want to relocate the gate to allow better, easier access and get it off the road a little bit further, so there's a little bit of a cost there to get that gate relocated. So $15,900 on that.
Tad, a lot of times with these fences and other things, when we talk with the people who are installing them, it's, they're able to use the key card access and all that. Is that gonna allow us to do that?
No, ma'am. This will be strictly a lock and chain because it's remote, it's a remote location, and so this will just be strictly under lock and a chain and lock.
Is it used by all of your employees?
No, ma'am, not all of our employees, but certain employees have access, especially in the Technical Services Division of the Gas Department. That's mainly the individuals that will be using it. But there's also other individuals, like they have to go cut the grass and do general maintenance and that type of thing. So not all employees access, but those that will, they will, that need access, they will have a key to do so.
Thank you.
Tad, you might want to tell them, you did send all the information.
Oh, you're talking about...
They'll live up on that line.
Yes, so on the first item, on the TJ construction for the high pressure valve replacement, all of that information was sent on July the 11th. It just, it kind of slipped through the cracks, if you will, and not placing blame on anyone. It's as much my fault as it is anyone's, but that was actually sent on July the 11th. The reason we haven't added to the agenda is because I caught it when the, when Ms. Kathy sent the agenda out Friday, I guess it was Friday. I caught it Friday afternoon, and we started discussing it yesterday morning in order to be able to get it on here. So it has been submitted, it was submitted on July the 11th. It just, it just fell through the cracks and was not added to the agenda. So that's the reason for the little bit of confusion there.
Thank you.
And I apologize, I should've said bench.
We knew what you meant.
Sure, sure. So anybody, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Mr. Phil?
I have several things on the agenda this afternoon. The first one is a change order with Waste Services in Northeast Mississippi. This starts year two of our three-year contract with these guys. We introduced this to Public Works yesterday, and it's the CPI adjustment, Consumer Price Index Adjustment. So they're proposing to go from 65, 75 per ton for disposal to 67, 53 per ton for disposal. It's a $1.78 per ton increase based on the CPI. They do this every year, and they've done it the last, this is the fourth year in a row.
Do you want to share with the group how much that will cost your department year over year?
Yeah, roughly, an estimate is about $49,128 per year, depending on how much garbage we generate. So it's per ton, so it's gonna be, you know, near a $50,000 a year increase in the cost for disposal.
It seems so tiny till you added it up.
It does. $1.78 is a lot better than $49,178, that's a fact. So I do need to vote in an approval on that amendment, change order to that contract.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Mr. O'Neal, second by Mr. Rick and Oliver, third motion.
On the regular agenda, consent agenda, actually, the first item I have is P, which is a payment of invoice certified alarm. We relocated some wires. We're putting it together at the central garage facility at the new Starkey Drive property. We had to relocate a wire, and on the next contract, we had to relocate a gas line to get these big garage doors in so that we can get big trucks in that building. So that's what these two, P and Q, are about. One was a gas line, one was certified alarm, removed theirs, they questioned on those two. R is resolution for American Equipment Holdings doing businesses meant to scale works. Formerly, to us, it was Canala Scales, and so they've just undergone a name change somehow, but they do the scales at the landfill to certify them as required by the Department of Ag and Industries, and they do this about twice a year. So this is the General Services Contract with them. Next item was...
How many years do we have that contract with them?
We do it like every three.
Okay, so same cycle as a lot of these?
Yeah, and we've had these guys since this set of scales has been installed. This is our second set, but they come out and service and monitor it and fix any issues we may have.
Thank you.
All right, item S is Alabama awnings payment. We had a storm damage back at Starkey Drive that blew the awning off the front, and so this was needed to replace. I think that storm was in April, $850.
And it's been repaired, okay?
It's been fixed, yes. Okay, the next ones are contracts with Kenworth Huntsville to come to the landfill and work on our vehicles. One's a street vehicle, one's, two are solid waste. And they have a mobile service truck that can come and do things that we can't do based on diagnostics and computer stuff. So these are three contracts with them to repair. The first one was a street sweeper, which we got it back going now. That's good. The second two are garbage trucks. And any questions on those?
And do I understand what you said correctly? They have been repaired and are back in operation?
Yes, that is a fact. And so we're in the process of doing the General Services Contract with them. They're the authorized Cummings engine dealer, and so, or service thing, so we'll have a general contract come to the next couple of meetings, hopefully. Any other questions, Ms. Rehm?
Excellent. Thank you.
I have one item, that's 11W. It's a resolution to approve an agreement between the City of Florence and Check My Spot Incorporated to provide screening services for early detection and treatment of skin cancer for the employees of the City of Florence for a term of six months in an amount by exceeding $3,000 to be paid through utility funds and reimbursed by other departments who use the program. We've talked about this for several months. This is basically a trial program because they found that skin cancer is more rampant among folks that are outside, you know, from electrical workers, some of TAD's folks, parking wrecked, or others. And this is an attempt to catch these skin cancers before they go too far. And the way we're looking at this, one, one catch could save a life and also could save a lot of money from our insurance. So we talked with Dr. Webb, and we feel like we want to try this and see how it works. Doesn't work, we won't do it again.
You said six months?
Yes.
And then how does somebody activate it?
Okay, there's actually an app, and once we get this activated, they'll come out and train us on how to do it.
Okay, and then, as far as billing goes, Shana, is that Shana's office to make sure?
No, that's Mark Lovejoy.
Right, okay. But other areas can access it, too?
Well, obviously, park, wreck, and others. I think they'll look down on it, you know, how they want to use it.
Okay, and it's app-driven, and then everything will funnel through Mark's office for utility?
Absolutely. And they are saying, if, let's say, for instance, I mean, if you ever visit a dermatologist, you know, it takes a while to get there, they will guarantee an appointment with an appropriate dermatologist when, in a very short period of time. So that's a win-win for us, too. Any other questions?
Here we have some board, board appointments. Got two on CETA. We have, you guys have the applications. And Mr. Mark, Mark Brerick?
Brerick.
Brerick, he's eligible to be reported, and if he wants to be reported?
Yes.
So Mr. Brerick is going to be reported for the CETA, and then we have applications for CETA for Mr. Mike Curtis.
Did we not already do the book? Well, Mr. Bauer's application in the pile here is...
The hour just responded. No, we haven't booked it.
Okay.
Mr. Bowles can't be reported, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then we have Mr. Bowers, Richard Morrissey, and those are the three that we have, so.
Are we ready to take appointments?
Yes, we are.
Okay. I would make a motion that we approve Trip Bower for this vacancy.
Sure. Any other motion? Okay, motion by Ms. Ubanks, second by Mr. Hendricks, for Mr. Trip Bower for the CETA appointment, all in favor. And those are the only two that we have, so, Mr. Trip Bower and Mr....